Well, the hour of. Five o'clock has arrived. Uh, call to order on the meeting. Roll call attendance.
Lee.
President.
Catherine.
President.
Jerry.
Here.
Christina, absent. Uh, Scott is absent and Gil is here to represent the board. Margaret, present.
Bonnie. Present. Okay, does somebody want to um make a motion for Igor to join us?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. You wanna pull a seat up?
We still didn't get extra chair?
Oh, that was up to Scott.
Actually, that's why I said Gil.
One of us still has to sit in the chair seats. And um. Maybe it's safer to me, do we have anybody attending?
This isn't doing. No, I already have one.
Do we have anybody attending? Okay, John Kimball, okay. Um. We have the um public hearing announced for five fifteen, so we can. Jump ahead and do a couple of other things if we want. Um, approval of the minutes, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three excavation. Uh, pit visits, you've got a copy of that, a copy of that. There's just notes on. On uh what we saw, what we did. Um. Do we want to make the motion to approve them?
I can make a motion to approve them.
Let's, there's only half.
I'll say the motion.
All right. Now, you wanna do the uh any corrections errors or omissions?
Lee?
Uh, yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Gil?
Abstain.
Margaret?
Yes.
Igor?
Abstain.
And Bonnie?
Yes. Okay, and then we have the. November thirteen, twenty twenty-three public hearing.
Lee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, Gil? Margaret?
Yes.
Igor?
Abstain.
Bonnie?
Yeah.
Uh, yes. And so. Who made the motion to approve that one? Yeah, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay. And note that. Um. With selectmen's report, Scott isn't here, if you have anything to say on behalf of the selectmen?
No, the other thing, one of the things we we looked at at the last meeting is what I remember was. The painting the bridges again down by the Jackal Island.
Okay.
There's gonna be so. As usual, lane changes and so forth. And that sort of thing, and we had a meeting with two people from the uh. DOT about that. By and soon. Um. But other than that. Not a lot going on, we haven't had a meeting since. Over the month.
Okay. That's good information to know. All right, any questions from the board for the selectmen?
No.
Thank you. Um. Correspondents received follow-up information packet from John Kimball deferred from the last meeting, we'll we'll save that for later in case. Um, doesn't need. Was Scott in there?
Just out of curiosity, is that? As it pertains to the. That's the same John Kimball from down on Route Three?
Yes, yes.
I'm sure that's, that's the two, you done range?
No, it's uh earth excavation. Uh, his comments in general, he can, he can fill us in, in fact, he's on. He's on the uh. And like uh.
Hello, John.
Mike John, you, I guess, is uh adjoint, just, I think that's Mike John, you is it? Probably, um anyway. We'll have a discussion here from uh but. His questions um currently um. Uh, mostly surrounding blasting and earth excavation. But we will get one, he sent us a package of a lot, I think eighty-two pages, I think that. I think I printed off eighty-two pages and ran out of my um ink cartridge. Doing so, um. Email from Judy Welch and Kathy. Katie, excuse me, Katie Payne, Kate, Kate. Uh, state floodplain management program coordinator, rethema floodplain map adoption. Um, so, we're gonna be dealing with that a little bit um. Further along tonight. And we got. An email from Ken Millar. Uh, we're trying to finalize the hazard mitigation date. He threw out some suggestions to us, um, it's a requirement, I guess he as um. Uh, police chief um. Is responsible for putting together a hazard mitigation plan because there is. Uh. A hazard. But he uh said we have to respond to, he gave us a bunch of dates. My suggestion is we take the first one, which is February. February seventh, you know, we've been trying to get us together for a long time now. And we just never, you know, the summer and we can't ever find a date. When a bunch of us can meet with him. As part of the process, he's supposed to give from the planning board and selectmen and probably the public and everybody else. So, what do you guys think of saying yes to February seventh? Meet with Kevin?
I'm in.
And he suggested, I think, ten AM. February seventh, ten AM?
I am unavailable on February seventh at ten AM. But. That doesn't mean.
That is difficult for me. Just in general.
So you want to suggest to him?
What's the next one that he gave?
He, next one he gave is March sixth. Ten o'clock.
All of them are Wednesdays at ten AM in the first group of the month.
Um, for me, March sixth, I don't have anything that's.
March, I can plan to have a morning off.
All right, so.
February seventh, I'm available, but. Depends on what the majority is.
Okay, how many can do March seventh?
March sixth.
Six, March sixth at ten. All right, we'll select that one.
Just gonna confirm it back to us once he confirms, all right?
Once, yeah, once he confirms. Um, still got a few more minutes. Um. We've got a. The um. Earth excavation pit bond certification from cons, number reason, we got.
So, here's my question on that. Um, the bond that we received, the thirty thousand eight hundred, and it goes through December sixth of twenty twenty-four, if I remember correctly. Um, their pit. Application expired on September ninth, so this is gonna be used if they don't do their reclamation, is that my understanding on that?
Yes, we could.
So, I mean, but it's so, so they have, what, a year?
They have a year.
So, okay, so they have a year, and should they want to. Can um establish a new pit permit, they would have to do it at the rate of twenty-five thousand per acre, is that correct?
Um.
I think that's what our regulation says.
Because there is, you get, you have to get a new permit, there's no. Um, extending a permit for, you know, there's no adding another five years on to one you already got. You have to apply for a new one, obviously, if you're proposing the same thing. You can submit the same plan, obviously, but but you have to, you have to submit a new application. And yes.
Yeah.
You can make the person uh comply with the current regulations.
Yep, yeah, so that was, that was my question, because I I know that. They showed that they had five point four acres that were were open, and that's significantly more than thirty thousand eight hundred, so. Um, I just wanna make sure that that I was understanding that correctly.
A- absolutely, and um. Bill said when he gets back um from Florida, he'll.
Come visit us.
Submit one. He'll submit one, he just didn't get to it for a laugh. He wants one. He's not doing anything right now, he promised that. And um. So, yes, yes, that's a chance for us to increase it when he comes in. Um, let's see. Well, we're not quite there yet. We can do one more thing perhaps. Um. Anything else there that looks like it's gonna be? The planning board. Well, not my group, I'm not. Um.
At the bottom of the list, we have um. A minor subdivision and a lot line investment that will be coming up in our next.
Right.
So, that we can throw us in on where those swim.
Um, we're going to send out the answer paper. Probably next week, um, the letters are pretty much ready to go out. To the abutters on both of them. And I do have the um electronic data from Steve Towers. I can email everybody ahead of time, so. Uh, you'll be able to look at the plans on your computer rather than having to come in.
And what's, where's the, what's the location of this?
Um, one is, sorry. Uh, one is the referred minor subdivision on Paradise.
Okay, yeah.
And then the other one was across the street.
I saw that, okay.
So those will come before us next time. All right, well, we're supposed to, we still have five more minutes to get to the review. Okay, but I I didn't know if the computer was gonna take too long, so yes, Margaret, tell us about the computer.
Okay, well, card, um, planning board computer has computers due. Died five days after his warranty expired.
Of course.
And it won't boot.
Yeah.
So, we need to make some decisions, and we've got a couple of options in front of us. Um. Although it's out of warranty. There are service options available from Lenovo where we bought it. Unfortunately, their service options start at a hundred and forty dollars to diagnose. And then depending where they find whatever their standard service start with are. So that's one possibility. The laptop itself cost us about eight hundred dollars to begin with. So. Whether or not it's gonna be cost effective to repair it rather than replace it is.
Yeah.
Questionable.
Um, do we, do we have all the data and software separate that we can load on to a new computer?
We have. At least ninety percent of the data separate from it.
Yeah.
Is that something that we should address is due somewhere? So there isn't a single point of failure?
This is something that I think we should consider for when we replace it, is getting a. Um, an off-site backup solution, there's something that I use called Backplace that just automatically backs things up anytime that the computer is on.
Right, that's what I was thinking, and not in the same location in case of fire or damage.
Yep, so if anything happens, you can just download it from the cloud.
Right. I think that that's something that we need to address for sure.
What's the cost of that?
It's um. The one that I use is sixty-one years, yeah, it's not expensive at all, it's really inexpensive.
I I would say chasing a computer that has issues, uh, my experience is you'd better to replace.
Absolutely.
For the eight hundred dollars.
Absolutely.
It's better to replace.
Do we, do we have it in our budget?
Um, no, um. I was wondering, had, did anyone check, see if there's any kind of class action or, I mean, no. It's fairly new.
Yeah, but it's past its warranty date, so there wouldn't be a class action for something past that warranty date.
If a lot of people had, you know, crashed like. Five days before or.
How old is it there?
It's the. It was a. A slightly older model when we bought it, and it was. About three years old.
It's three year, three years old now?
Well, so, so we don't have, we don't have any spot in anybody that we can rob eight hundred dollars from, is that what I'm hearing?
No, not really.
Okay, so maybe we could ask the selectmen if they have. Some place where this, you can steal eight hundred dollars for a computer.
Cheryl will be able to help you more than I can.
Yeah.
Um, can you just replace the hard drive on it? Or was it a physical thing?
We don't, we don't know exactly why it won't boot. Because it, it doesn't do anything, and the light goes on that it's getting power, and that's all it does.
No, that's a marker too.
And so.
Reasons right there.
The one thought I had is there's a local guy around that. Knows a lot about computers and that's the end we. And his name begins with Z and it's a mile long. Um, I didn't know whether we wanted him to take a look at it. And and give us a free opinion, or I I'm sure he'd give us a free opinion or charge us twenty bucks.
Kind of hard to get an opinion if it won't go on, you would have to troubleshoot it. Give a price.
Well, I should do just research on the unit itself.
Model itself.
But, you know, committing somebody to do something for free that you haven't even spoken with yet is probably a. A bit of a stretch, I would think, it's especially.
That's literally your job, right?
He would, he would do it, I mean. I just have to call him at ten thirty at night and say, oh my goodness, my computer crashed. And he's right on it, you know, he's right on troubleshooting it already.
For you personally, but if you're town in rate, it's different.
I, I, I.
It's town, it may be something different.
I a thousand percent agree. I a thousand percent agree that when it's a town computer. That you um. You know, you have maybe a higher standard to. Send it uh somewhere to a certified somebody or other.
Boston Tech is free.
And then to get somebody who knows a lot about computers, you know, you do things differently when it's say. A uh public entity than. Than a private uh individual, um, I just know very.
For, I, I think.
Very, you're shaking your head, you're very, you know.
Which I'm sure it's fun.
Yeah, if you could, if you could uh maybe ask the the selectmen if that's what the board thinks.
And you can get a decent.
Our budgets are.
Yeah, let's, let's just say. Um. Our budget's been submitted, and the selectmen did. Um, put in. Put in more money, they, they up the ante, they did not, I met with them and they did not. Accept our submitted budget. To submit to the town, they felt that. Things are coming up, you know, the town's growing, that we might, we don't wanna cut so short. So the selectmen took it upon themselves. To put in more money than we asked for, so.
If you can run that by them, that would be really awesome.
I'm not sure when, I don't know if we're meeting tomorrow night or next few steps. We all agree. We didn't meet last week, we haven't had anything. Um, to my knowledge, um. Submitted for. The agenda, so I'm not sure.
What you can ask?
Yeah, I walked out, I can bring it up.
That would be great.
To anybody else.
And they did give us more money than what we asked for, so.
Thank you.
They might be.
Did you have plans for the, for the addition, the additional money?
No.
How much was it?
Um, I think it was four thousand.
Then why can't we use?
Yeah.
Get up there?
And they.
It has to be around.
I'm pretty sure it's four thousand more, and I just thought, oh gosh. We're, we're in a growth spurt.
It wasn't out of mind.
No, you think they put it in on itemized?
I don't know if they'll give you another eight, when they've already given the, eight hundred, when they've already given the four thousand, but.
And we do have additional, I don't know, but just maybe we.
Right.
We do have to spend some of it on.
Yes. Agreed.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So we'll go that route. Okay, and we must have arrived at five fifteen. Um. I opened the public hearing for the proposed amendments to the Woodstock Land Subdivision Regulations. Um. There are not major. We have um. There are not major. Changes proposed, one is the definition, the definition of minor and major subdivision. And then there's a, a couple of language changes uh throughout. And changing the um. Language concerning um face flood elevation, there's new terminology. For that, which means the same, we've been told. Um, and um. And then there was another one concerning. Um. The definition of the um. Of a three lot subdivision, then there's no new roads. But and Margaret, Margaret was sort of the. Care of that, do you, do you wanna explain things a little more?
Largely what our intention was in this revision was. Number one, to bring it in alignment with the floodplain ordinance. Number two, to make sure that we remove the ambiguity between major and minor subdivision. And by. Closing a loophole in minor subdivision. Where the previous definition had said um. That a minor subdivision was one with not more than three lots or. Not a new road. And we've changed it to not more than three lots and not a new road. Um, and then. The remaining changes are largely just clarifying wording for ease of reading.
Here it is, right here, the. The documents, the all that one.
And, and we consolidated the section on. Um. Application requirements to make it easier for people to follow.
Though the uh attorney looked at it. And was okay with it. Um. It's been a while in the making. It's not like.
Margaret did a great job on it.
She did.
Yes.
And you know.
Margaret did an awesome job, and, you know, we just didn't do it lightly or quickly. Uh, it was given an awful lot of thought. Does anybody in the. Audience have any questions around the um. On the Zoom? Your honor, Mike, do you have any um questions or comments about the subdivision regulation?
I have no comments, Bonnie.
Okay. And Mike, ever Mike?
No, I got nothing.
Okay, Bonnie, in um three point oh six, the board action on completed application, there was a note from Lee. From Lee about the providing harmonious development. Of municipality and its environment is not quantifiable, and he had requested that it be removed. And the note is still in there and and it's not addressed. So I don't know if it's chosen to not be addressed intentionally, or if it was just that sort of a lot. Ran us through it.
This was one of the ones that we talked about when we met.
Yes, and what I am trying to recall were.
I think what we decided at the time was that. We would leave it until. We went through the master plan and. Did further work on.
Right, and then it would be moved over at that time.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make.
No, we're trying to get into the master plan, but it had, we're not prepared yet.
Cause it wasn't a resolved comment, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for picking that up, yeah, thanks. Did anybody see any other?
Yeah, that, that's actually an important comment, Catherine, because in the. The revision of it, we noticed that there were several places where it talked about. How we deal with the natural environment, and there's. Some vague language throughout the document about.
Right.
Preserving the natural environment and keeping nature natural, which is, is not quantifiable.
Right, it's unenforceable, and so it's more, you know, esoteric, we have to go to the master plan.
Right. And the master plan is, is in a state of flux right now, because the master plan subcommittee is still working on their revisions.
Yeah.
But once we get to that point, that's one of the issues that we want to work on. Making it a little bit clearer on how we want it. Um, develop the town going forward so that we can preserve our natural beauty. While still also respecting the needs of. To be able to.
And that's an important uh function of a master plan, and Margaret, Margaret's smart girl, let's forget it, because she brings it up. You know, and and the documents are supposed to work in conjunction with each other and be consistent. All right. So we'll leave it as is for now and not remove it. Uh, even though it's not quantifiable, it'll make us remember. It's an important topic, okay? Bill, did you have anything? Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Hello. I'll second.
Hey?
I'll second.
And you are um making a motion to approve it?
Correct.
The amendments. Offered. Okay. Um. Probably we're supposed to close the hearing and then do that, but it's only Bill here. And I don't think it matters, we can, we can vote on it within the meeting of the hearing, I would think. All right, you wanna do the roll call?
All right, Lee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Gil?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Igor?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes. Yay. Yay.
Good job.
It's uh, boy, another one done. It's another one done, we're, we're, we're getting them done, we just will have um. The master plan to work on some more, but we're, we're getting one done. Okay. Um.
We're on it, the chairman.
We'll close the hearing. All right. Um. Do we want to do, do we wanna talk about the um. Information in the um John Kimball um packet? Does anybody look at it or have any comments or anything they wanna say?
I thought it was an interesting read.
Very interesting. So, John has any comments?
John, do you have anything you wanna say about? Your submission?
Well, I, I'm looking to, to hear basically what the board's comments were. Uh, one of the big issues was when you completed your annual review. Uh, of the physical site. There's some conditions that are contained within. Permits that were issued by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the wetlands permit, et cetera. Uh. Are those conditions considered by the board to be part of the actual permit?
We um. We can only enforce or regulate or whatever. Whatever is within our regulations, um certainly. If an applicant, it appears before other places. Um. And. Um. That might provide us. You know, documentation that we might want for our file. You will get it, and I mean, they'll send it to us. Um. DES or whatever will send correspondence to us as to whatever their agency is finding, or whatever. Uh, actions before them, but we um. We can only enforce our own. Regulations and the extent to which our regulation. Um. Includes. Other regulations, you know, in other words, if our regulation asks. For. For a letter from. Um, other agencies within the town, or a letter from the historical society. The um seeing if there's any um. Uh, historical preservation or any Army Corps issues or any other issues. I mean, if we ask them. We, we want to see them. But that doesn't mean we act upon. Um, whatever is within their purview. I mean, what else, what do other people think?
I, I, I think that's a fairly accurate synopsis.
Covers, covers everything that, that we do.
Well, I'd like to bring up the fact that the RSA one fifty-five echo. Uh, is very explicit about what documents have to be available to the planning board prior to having the public hearing. And within those documents are basically everything that's needed to uh. Make a decision for the uh operating permit. And in this case, there had to be a uh. A wetlands, there had to be an alteration in the terrain. There was some discussion of whether or not the EPA had any requirements, and I'm not sure that that's ever been resolved. Because none of that stuff was available when the conditional permit was issued back in December of twenty twenty. The condition was that uh they had to remain uh away from the wetlands when they did the excavation. The condition was that uh they had to remain uh away from the wetlands when they did the excavation. Pending approval of the alteration terrain, wetlands, and etc. So therefore, when those documents became available, they should have been available prior to the decision. Those conditions are stipulated within those individual permits issued by the other agencies. Of which you were required to have. In present when you made your decision. And when you did your walk-in permit, uh when you did your walk-around, uh there was things like uh. The silk fence along the brook. That was flagged when the permit was issued that that silk fence had been uh. Started to fill up, hadn't been cleaned out. When you did your walkthrough, what was the condition of that silk fence? Another condition was all of the water that was on that. Uh gun range area, which is part of the permit, was supposed to have been diverted to a low point. And I don't believe that has been done because the the latest rains that we had here. Over Christmas and stuff still had water coming down into the brook. So that goes back to uh when you do your uh. Permit. All conditions that are related to that permit are supposed to be stipulated on that permit and posted locally at the job site. To my knowledge, the only stipulation that we've ever talked about is the fact that Calder agreed to notify the abutters. Prior any future blasting. I believe that there's a whole laundry list of things that are conditioned on that permit. And did anybody on the board, as far as doing the annual review? Bothered to talk to the issuing agencies, the Department of Environmental Service, to see if in fact. There are any outstanding violations or notifications associated with their portion of that. Because as the. As the regulator under the excavation definition, I believe it's your authority to bring and make a decision. Ultimately, whether the town's gonna approve it or not approve it.
Well, at the annual site inspection. We just looked at the site. From the perspective of our permit and compliance with our permit. Inquiring to um state permits that. They, we're not doing states inspection, I mean, if they wanna expect something.
But if our if our if our permit includes a reference to a state permit.
Right.
Wouldn't that require us to actually have the approval on that permit? Before we can grant approval from ours, if it's referenced, is the question. You know, if we have that tied to ours.
Well, when, so this is twenty twenty, so it was three years ago when this when this was, um this permit was. Accepted and according to John Kimball, and I don't, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But he said the only thing that was listed on there was that. Just I just lost it, well, there was one one item on that that Calder had to. Refresh my, I just lost it, completely lost it.
The condition on the permit as we issued it was that. He was to excavate no more than ten acres and it must be east of the wetlands.
Okay, and so that's what, that's the condition.
Right.
On there, so there's no other conditions that are listed on that permit that were accepted in twenty twenty. And he started um doing his business of his earth excavation at that point, correct?
And we we learned that if they need a wetlands permit or some permit and another pot. Remember, it it's phase and not these are five acre sections. Well, if that permit isn't needed until. Um ten years from now and one of the other phases of the project. We don't need, we don't need that wetlands permit.
So so.
To do this five acres, if there's no wetlands there and the permit and and the state wetlands permit is over there. Out of jurisdiction of this particular five acres.
So I'm trying to understand this from a couple of different perspectives, so an applicant comes in. The board approves, you can excavate based on whatever the stipulation is, in this case, it was. Um the ten thousand uh or ten acres rather. Um and there was no other stipulation in the permits for five years. The next time, if he's going to a different part of the property, there may be different. Um expectations or requirements on the permit.
So you want to see from that application as a new permit?
Gotcha.
There is no renewal. So every time he comes, we evaluate based on. What he's applying for at the time, if his new permit, he was, he would be intending to excavate in an area that involved the wetlands. Then we we would have to evaluate it on basis.
So in twenty twenty five, when when he comes back to us, if it's a different section, we will look at it from that perspective.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I get that.
Absolutely.
But that's not the, that's not the case in this one, okay? The old permit that was from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty was for two point two acres. This new permit is for the entire thirty two acres. It's not a sub piece of that, it's for the entire thirty two acres, that's what the permit.
It is no more than ten acres, John, east of the wetlands.
All all right.
He does not have a permit for um.
Entire thirty acres.
Yeah.
Alright, I believe the application was for thirty two acres, is for the entire piece.
The permit we issued was for more than ten acres east of the wetlands.
We will double check for you, but I I think that is the case.
Okay, and the next, the next part of it is. The reconciliation between the intent to excavate. Which is filled out in uh April. And submitted to the select board. In March of the following year. You fill out a actual report of what was excavated. Now, in the twenty fifteen to twenty twenty permit, nobody bothered to do the. Paperwork to see whether or not what was being reported matched what was allowed. That particular permit was for seventeen thousand cubic yards. Forty something thousand cubic yards were removed by paperwork. And basically, that was because nobody was taking and. Looking at the two reports and reconciling them at the end of the year.
This isn't the report that comes to the planning board.
Well, the the correction for that, when I reported that back in twenty ten, was the selectmen now send the planning board. The intent of excavation, I believe that whole purpose was to make sure that you had the information. So when you did your annual uh reviews, walk downs, you could reconcile that. That issue is what, when you go out and take your pictures, what do you do with that? Do you sit down with an engineer, do you use software, do you take in, take measurements to make sure that what was reported removed? Matches?
We do not um hire an engineer. We don't, we could, but we don't, we never have. We um, we walk the site with the applicant. We look at the site. Um but we um. We do not come back, you know, to the office and have an engineer. Uh review all the data or anything, it's a a site visit.
The the removal of the material, is that a well, is that a. For lack of a better word, in stone or is it approximation?
It 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 it's a report that you sign perjury if it's not accurate, so I'm assuming. That is taken either by measurements like grade stakes. Or somebody's keeping track of the number of trucks that go in and out of the pit during the course of the year.
Because the state also gets tax revenue.
Right.
On that, and they had, I remember her her name was Mary, I think um Langer maybe.
Langer.
Yeah, she was the 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 lady who did that.
Yeah.
Um and so I don't know if she's still around.
She retired.
Yeah, so the uh the the state actually has people that do that and they they know all of the the math to uh. To um calculate. How much, but I could have sworn on one of the applications that I saw it said the approximate. Um the approximate amount of material to be um removed and that that's kind of. Lucy goosey, but that's what I saw and I don't even remember what it was on.
That that's on your intent to excavate that you fill out April first of each year. And the report of excavated materials is supposed to be an accurate report of act, what was actually removed. And those are all, they're all required to be uh accurate.
Not talking about twenty twenty three or twenty 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 two, why why are we going back to twenty ten?
Wh- what I'm trying to tell you, Jerry, was uh. It doesn't look like anything has changed on the board as far as what you look at when you go out and do these annual inspections. So what you looked at last time, nobody understood that there was only supposed to be seventeen thousand cubic foot removed. And you had over forty thousand when you went through and did the math. Nobody was paying attention. Now you folks are the regulator, what is it that you actually do with the data that you go out and collect when you're on the site? If there's not grade stakes that you can take and do a measurement, physical verification, plug in some software perhaps. How are you knowing whether or not what's being removed is accurate?
I believe we're relying on the state and the and the uh. The the pit operator themselves giving us the measures.
It's so back, again, going backwards now. Nobody bothered either at the state level or the operator level to recognize that they took out thirty something thousand cubic feet. More than they were supposed to.
How do you know they took out more than thirty thousand feet more than what they were supposed to?
Because I took and did the math. Off of the report of excavated materials that were submitted. And added them up. And that's what's in that thirty one page document that I gave to the planning board back in December of twenty twenty.
John, you said that you did the math yourself?
Yes, I did the math myself using public information.
And I asked what your qualifications are to to do that, you asked us to do the, to hire engineer. To to do that, now you're saying that you did the math, is there a qualification that you have? To do that, to evaluate something like that?
Well, I have basic qualifications of being able to read a public document and do mathematic equations. When I look at the permit that says seventeen thousand cubic yards can be taken out. And you look at the uh. Report of excavated materials and what was actually removed.
Who generates the report of excavated materials?
That is done by the, in this case, Calder Construction.
Okay, so he did then provide the information on how much he removed from that um site, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But who's who's verifying that? You folks are the regulating body, who is verifying the accuracy of that information? And you're saying that you're relying on the state? Obviously, that failed for that prior permit, and is anybody checking it now that you've got the new permit going?
You're saying it failed, but you're saying it it failed based on your judgment and not on what the state or. Contractor stated or did.
The the state only takes and acts on what is reported, the statements on there that it has to be accurate or the person's guilty of. Uh perjury or whatever and all that kind of stuff. Okay? This here is just, all I'm asking is take a look at the two reports and reconcile that when you do your annual walkthroughs. Is what rea, is what being reported actually making sense when you're out there looking at stuff?
John, I made a note to 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 do that, it would be helpful if prior to our next walkthrough, if you would remind us.
Yeah.
Seriously, I I'm I mean, because then then it would be before the fact instead of after the fact. You know, once the water runs over the dam, it's hard to get it back back in, you know?
And we and we certainly asked um. And try to verify that there was then their permitted quantities. And we go to the site and and we don't see any evidence that looks like they got terribly carried away.
Correct.
We asked Rex, or you know, how you coming along with it? And he'll say, you know, we're on by the third done, or or whatever, I mean, we're not. We're not skilled to know exactly where they are along the process, but we. We do ask the question, well, how's it coming, and we do visually look to see if he's within the same area, we do look to see if he's. Gone down below the water table if he's not supposed to, we do, we do visually look. The size of the area.
Is there a way, based on the permit? And I didn't see what was issued the past years. Um that when we go to a site, we can determine what the delta would be between what was on the permit and what's on the reports that he's giving. So that's something that like a checklist that to go down to help address what John's issues are. And also to keep us getting compliance with what whatever is on the permit that gets issued moving forward. I mean, we clearly can't go backwards, but we. Can make something, maybe some sort of a checklist for a site visit that has specific items that need to be. Reviewed and addressed while we're on a site visit.
We certainly can improve our site visit. We can, we certainly can, and and perhaps. We do go with the permit, we do know that the permit says what the plan says, where the area is supposed to be.
Right.
We do visually look to see if there's any um siltation of the. Over the bank, or we do look to see if there's um. Any any water um. Uh we look, we visually look at at the site and and. And use our best judgment and skill to 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 walk away thinking that. It looks appropriate or or we see something that we question, remember that?
Yeah.
Um we've had, Patty had a question, um. We've had questions, oh, is that supposed to be like that, now we think it's rote? And yes, it's perfectly appropriate, or it isn't, I can remember sending advisory letters to. Pit owners making, we don't wanna tell them what to do or how to fix it. We don't wanna order them to do anything, but we. We can say, we we looked at it, looked, that looks like it might be a little steep slope, or that might be. An attractive nuisance, or we have in the past uh made comments to pit owners and suggestions to them. Um just from our our perspective that that. Might make it a better operation, but we're not professional.
We don't take measurements by the point, how much he takes out.
Well, as I'm new to this, John. Uh what I understand that right now, what the issue is, that the permit was issued to certain amount. The pit operator obviously reports certain amount. Your findings are contrary to what the pit operator is reporting. So. I just trying to educate myself that how do we find out? If you have that kind of information, next time we go to the pit, I would like to see that information, what you have. What the discrepancies are, and we'll go and we can confront the pit operator right there at the inspection. That these are the discrepancies found by John Kimball. And uh. We can find out if those discrepancies are accurate, not accurate, whether there is some agency that is. None of us can evaluate how much rock was taken out of the pit. We're not experts, we can rely on on uh people, what they tell us.
Or you can report them to the state, saying, hey, state, this guy hasn't paid for what he took out, he took out more than what he said he took out. Find out from the state, what the steps are that you can challenge the amounts. Find out from the state what the steps are that you can challenge the amounts.
No, my understanding.
It's a little bit different than uh what's being portrayed there. Uh. It it's not. It's not a difference between what's being reported and what's uh being anticipated. There was occurrences in the prior permit. Where the rate of removal or the amount of removal was being exceeded. Nobody caught it. And per the law, if that occurs, there's supposed to be. Uh, amendment made to the operating permit. In other words, if you're taking out more than you're supposed to be doing, or you're taking out at a faster rate than you said you were gonna be doing, it needs to come back to the planning board to be determined that it's okay to do that.
But is this the the permit that you're talking about that's already expired?
Yeah, that was the last one, but there hasn't been anything done.
Do anything about that.
There hasn't been anything done that I can see where you're not allowing it to recur with this permit.
Yeah, and and uh we hear you, John, and and there's certain things we can put in place. To um improve our um. Process, certainly there is, and um we have. We have made amendments in the past when when somebody got out there and they. Okay, um, we're gonna wanna remove more. Or whatever. In the past, there have been times when a permit has been amended, not very often, but. Um. And it should be. If if they're finding out that the current permit. Isn't sufficient or. Or exactly the right area, they wanna move over here instead. Um, they should come to us and we should, we should uh. Approve or deny an amendment to the permit. But thank you for your input and um. We will take it under consideration and try to do our job the very best we can. And if there's room for. Uh, improvement or gathering more information or incorporating more into our. Site inspection, um. We certainly will consider that.
And and I would, I would truly encourage you to um to refresh our memories at the end of summer prior to our our annual pit remand. Seriously, beforehand. It it would be very helpful for me anyway.
Yeah, definitely. Provide us with any information that you may have that's the permit that that is in violation of the permit.
Any evidence?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
But for the benefit of Igor and for the newer members, again, I encourage you. To take a look at that thirty-one page document that I submitted to the planning board, prior planning board members. Uh, because I put in excruciating detail of where I got the information from. And it's right down the hall from where your meeting is right now. Judy has it all on file.
And I I printed off a copy before I realized it was eighty-two pages, but I kept printing. So I have it. I have it also. So thank you, um, thank you for all your uh thoughtful information and. And do get in touch with us prior to what's going on on our next inspection. And we can, we can take those suggestions with us and consider them. There's always room for improvement. There's always, there's always a way that you can make a visit more. Productive. Um, so thank you. All right, um. We have. Any more you want to say about um the? Flood plane management program, FEMA flood map, adoption. About the new?
Yeah. The the email that we received was a notification from um. Katie Page forwarded to us from Judy that. Um, documents needed to be prepared in advance of the select board meeting in December so that they could take a vote to. Approve that the floodplain. Map changes. Which were necessary so that we can take a vote tonight. To approve. The new maps adoption into our floodplain ordinance. Which will then need to be voted by. The public at town meeting. So that they can approve the amended ordinance with the new dates and now. So we just need to. Um, to vote to accept the ordinance with the correct dates with the new um floodplain maps. Of February eighth, twenty twenty-four. To be put forward at town meeting for the voting.
I made that motion.
I second.
Okay, any other special night? We have another big project. Nearly done. Do you want to do the roll call? Lee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Phil?
I'm not sure I can.
Margaret?
Yes.
Igor?
Yes.
On. Yes, another project done.
Okay, and then we need to give a certified copy of. This along with our master plan and our subdivision ordinance that we passed tonight. In the packet that goes to FEMA. For February eighth. So that they've got all of the documentation that proves that we're in compliance and. We remain in the National Flood Insurance Program.
It's quite a package. The we the slot can have to have a hearing. We have to um look at and adopt it. And there's another piece to it, yeah. Um, when we. Uh, work on our master plan some more, we gotta make sure we put the right language in there, consistent. Consistent with the whole program. And so. In order for property owners to be able to continue to take advantage uh um of flood insurance rates and we're also working on. Reduced rates, trying to up the ante and. And provide um more protection. And better, more, more reasonable rates. It's all. Part of a um federal initiative, FEMA initiative. To remain in the floodplain insurance. So it's a main step thing. Selectment, planning board, town meeting. And I think we've completed all the steps, right? We're we're all set for town meeting. Yeah.
Good.
And that was another big project, a lot of work on the part of a lot of people, so. We got one more to go, and that's the master plan. Hope we really. Um. As I said in my annual report. We got a lot of work done. Uh, in twenty twenty-three and we're finishing it up in twenty twenty-four, so. All right, um, subcommittee updates. The rules of. Prestige.
Uh, Jerry and I went through and reviewed that, um. We have multiple suggested edits and modification that we'd like to put in. Um, do you have a B copy of this as opposed to hard copy changes? My computer got. Purged based on a document that was sent to me by a government person.
I can get you an electronic copy. Do you wanna um work on it for the next meeting?
Yes, sure. I'll I'll put everything in and I can send it out to the board. That we will all have it to discuss moving forward.
Yeah, let's everybody look at it and think through and deal with it at the next meeting.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, pretty much got a lot of it done.
Yeah, yeah, we did. We worked on that and have all of our comment trading a role.
Wow. Do you wanna give us a hint on some of them now or you wanna wait?
Whatever you guys prefer.
Let's get it, let's get it all sort of, we have hard copy, we can read it and then get it back to you.
Yes, let's make that our along with the two hearings, our main.
Okay.
Our main project for um. Next meeting. That's great. Great, thank you. Um, subdivision, the regulation. So we're done. We're done. We just got done. The flood insurance program, well, I guess we just got done, other than continuing working on. The rate reduction.
That step, so our next step with that subcommittee is to get ourselves into the community rating system.
And we gotta wait until the the uh vote at town meeting, right, before we really.
Well, we can take the next step on the understanding that the ordinance will likely be approved at town meeting.
All right. Um, the master plan. And having another vision meeting and so forth. What's your brothers on that, trying to? Move that along, um, what's your availability for meetings or? What do you think?
One, one do you suggest?
I think um soon. I know Kevin Millar is. Very interested in the topic and there's others who wanna come, there's many.
And it's also tied to the document we were just looking at to to get that information incorporated to the master plan. But it's in our best interest probably to move forward relatively soon.
If if Kevin's interested in it, um, and we already have him on March sixth, oh, I don't, I don't, we do something on March sixth then.
Okay.
What?
I don't know if that's.
Does that, does that give you enough time?
It won't be for this, it will, I don't think it would be at this town meeting if that was the case. To get it done. I don't think we could turn it around that quick.
And and we don't, we don't have to go, we don't have to.
We don't have to, but. We probably want to have a meeting before March sixth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there'll be a writing involved in it besides giving ideas.
So what's people's availability to?
So our next meeting is.
The master plan.
On February twelfth, right?
Yeah.
Do you wanna have a work session prior to the to the meeting?
Let's.
Like, you know, a four o'clock work session or something like that?
That sounds good.
When do you wanna do that?
Before the February twelfth meeting.
But that means it it's a date.
Four o'clock.
February twelfth, four o'clock.
Four o'clock. The meetings at five.
Also, you wanna do it on February twelve?
Yeah, just the work session.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about uh, what time?
Four?
I can do four, I can do earlier if you want.
Four works for me.
Four works for me. I have a bunch worse.
Yeah, I know, work, work. Work, actual work. All right. Um. But we'll do that. Um. Mike Donahue has has asked a question of us. Um, and I I don't know, yes, we do know that's Mike Donahue on. He um. And he um wants to know. If he has to continue his bond. Um, for his earth excavation site, no longer has a permit on it, doesn't want a permit on it, but the bond. Um, he has a bond. That expires real soon. He's had a bond consistently. Even though he didn't have a. Uh, permit, so he doesn't intend. Have an earth excavation permit there anymore. The bond is up for renewal like next week. He wants to know if he has to keep the bond or can he? Cease getting a bond.
Has the um, has the, what do they call it, the reclamation been completed?
There's nothing there.
I, well, we didn't, see, we didn't get to go up there, so I don't know what the what the pit is, but.
Mike, is that you?
Yeah, can you hear me, Bonnie?
Yes, yeah, maybe you can explain better, um. Um, the situation. Um. You wanna say anything?
Yeah, what it was. Yeah, the the pit came up for renewal back in. September, October, I don't remember exactly what date. And I told you I was not gonna, I'm done, I'm done with it. And. I'm not renewing a permit. And as far as the reclamation, the way it was designed. And excavated, it went back to the face of existing ledge. It's nothing but a pure ledge face. You've got pictures of it, you've seen it. There is no soil. It's it's rock. It's, you know, and. In a prior meeting, you had announced that I let my bonds lapse. And there's never been a lapse on my bond since day one, and I believe I'm the first person to have a permit in town and actually. Went through that process.
That was probably my fault because I was looking for it and I didn't find it, but if it's been found, um, but so. So my thought is if there's a face in our excavation, um. Requirements are that there's no reclamation needed for the face of a ledge. That, um, it seems that if we had some some pictures of that, just so we would know for the file, that we can, we can close the file and it just stays. As a permanent file. To me, that would be the uh uh way to to handle that. We have existing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like right now.
You've got plenty, every year they take.
And say in twenty fifteen, we did this or whatever. It's right now.
We have a picture.
Right.
This year.
But because this year is the year that the bond.
Yeah.
Higher. Let's get one for the file.
Can you take a picture of how it looks now and and get it to us?
Um. I'm in Florida, Bonnie, for the winter, so.
So you're gonna miss the next slop.
Um.
But if you're all right, if I wanna up there and take a picture.
But if if you if. Yeah, go ahead and take your picture. If you. If you look at the original plans that was submitted, like I said, we were the first ones, I believe, to ever go through this process in town. And the way it was designed and even on the plans, it says that it'll be excavated back to the ledge. Cleaned off, and that's what the reclamation is, the ledge. Um, and that's what's been done. You can see the pictures, you walk there, you can look. Um, and that's what it is. And I've maintained the bond and. Legally, the way it's done with a bonding company, any bonding company, you can't just say, okay, I'm done. Don't renew my bond. They've got an obligation to the town. That's when you enter, you know, the contractor enters with them. And they need you to sign off on it saying, okay, you're happy, so that the bond no longer will be in effect. And that's what I'm looking to do. I'm looking to do it the right way, have a channel and say, planning board's happy. And because my bond. For twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, I got it in my hand. I I mean, they've already issued it to me. It was due on. Twelve uh. The first of December is when it was due to the town and. I've got it. And I just don't need it. Cause I'm not gonna operate. I'm not gonna renew that permit. So that's what I'm looking for, just for the. Town to sign off on it.
Yep.
Okay, um.
Three to vote.
Yeah, let's vote on that.
I'll I'll make the motion that um what we get, that Margaret gets a picture for the file and then this is closed and the bond can be. Um, returned or released, however it's. Returned or released.
I'll second that.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'm gonna take the roll call vote. Lee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Margaret, yes. Igor?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Um. The planning board's schedule, um, we're wondering. Because whether. Whether it makes sense about. The planning board meeting the third Monday of the month. The way things go and people put their stuff in and holidays and everything. What does anybody think of that?
I can't do the second, I can't do the third Monday. I'm on a different board on the third Monday.
Okay. Well, I answered that right there. It just seems like a lot of times people just miss the deadline. You scramble, scramble, scramble. The second um is a little early in the month, you know, people making their plans and everything going on. Um.
I I think whatever day you have it, people are always gonna be scrambling to get things.
It was just something that came up in passing. I don't know where the idea came from, but it. It it made enough sense to bring it up. So you've got the schedule.
Yep.
In your packet. Those are the meeting dates that we will uh uh publish uh in five o'clock. Everybody still happy with the five?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be.
Okay. We got our schedule. And I uh.
Just the uh, it all needs to be changed to the two thousand twenty-four.
Oh, okay, yeah. Are those twenty-four dates or?
It's just on top, it says twenty-four draft.
Just to be accurate.
Dates of the. The month of correctly this. I I wrote a couple of checks. All right, good. Thank you.
Okay, the only last thing we haven't talked about is the planning board, which I think we briefly. Okay, so only last thing we only talked about is the planning board budget, which I think we briefly mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
So, Martin, we're done?
Uh, well, I just. You're all set, as far as the nuclear future with what was advanced, with what's going on, your budget as of now? You don't need an additional eight or nine or?
Nine, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll try to make it.
If you're interested in sending eight hundred bucks our way.
Yeah. I thought four thousand was a lot, wasn't it, was it nice?
It is, well, the comment was made by the corner office over there. The, and they probably know some more things than we know, that it's apt to be a busy year. And I haven't gone in back in here and asked, oh, boy, what do you know that I don't? You know, I got the idea, they know this stuff coming down the road. And this has to be, we're in a growth period, you know, with. Lincoln just made it uh, on the list of, well, the top ten affordable ski resort towns. Advertised nationwide, nationwide, nationwide.
Yeah, I'm sure it's cheaper than Colorado.
I sent you it.
Uh, cheaper than Aspen, but.
Yeah.
Um, in New England, it was Stowe and Lincoln, so that's just an indication that Lincoln's on people's mind and it's, it's not a problem.
So Woodstock, you're aware of um, Airbnb and their, their uh, their new site? Um, of the top twenty-five or top twenty desirable places to go for either to invest or to go to. To visit in their business uh, section, Woodstock is number ten in the entire country.
Wow.
Not per capita, not per size of town or or this or that.
Wow.
Ten period, it has been for over a year.
Wow, wow.
So the selectmen were probably wise to give us a little extra money because things are happening.
Well, just remember too, that of all, we only live on about six or to seven percent of our property, available property. So it's not gonna take long, I don't think, to fill what we've got left, everything else is national forest, lakes, streams, rivers. Ponds, we don't have much to begin with.
And and I told, when I went to the budget committee, I said, no, we're only asking for what we ask for, we'll live on it. We're frugal, I call ourselves frugal. And and I said, you know, if you give us more money, that doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, that doesn't mean we're gonna go far. You know, um, but we can, we'll live on what you, what we asked for. And they gave, is, they're suggesting the higher number, so. And and I assured them, we're just not gonna go out and spend it, other than the people.
Minus subdivision on Paradise Grove?
We just announced that they're gonna be next time.
Okay.
And and.
They were going to park?
Yeah, those, just alerting you that that's gonna come next time, and is everybody okay with the annual report?
Yep.
Commit that?
Yep.
Yep.
We'll give that to Judy, anything, Bill, do you have for us?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's not good.
Thank you.
Uh, that site, by the way, is Air DNA, is what it's called.
Air DNA?